I call this meeting of Dune City Council on November 15th at 6:00 PM to order. Jamie Swearingen, Mayor.
The second item for business is the swearing in of our new mayor. Where's yours? Do you want to read it? Do raise your heart bright, yes, please. And repeat after me. I state my name.
I, Edward McGuire.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend.
That I will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
The Charter and codes of the city of Dune City.
The Charter and codes of the city of Dune City.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
To the best of my ability, so long as I am in office.
To the best of my ability, so long as I am in office.
Thank you. I'm going to take your place. My desk. Thanks. You can keep that one.
All right. Item two.
Three.
Three, sorry, roll call.
Mayor A. McGuire.
Present.
Councillor Tom Mallon.
Here.
Councillor President Susan Snow.
Here.
Councillor Melissa Stinson.
Present.
We have two openings on the city council and Senator, uh, Councillor Olson is out ill this evening. He's absent and excused.
All right. Item four. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is secured by the United States of America, and hence we, the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item five. The agenda. Do we have any proposed revisions to the agenda?
No, I do not.
Any comments? Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion and a second to approve the agenda? All right.
I move to accept the agenda.
Sir. Thank you. All those in favor?
Right.
I think that was your hands. Item six, consideration of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Sir. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. That will take us to item six. Sorry. We have two items six, announcements and correspondence. Are those part of the consent? Never mind.
No, the announcements are, usually you ask me to read them.
Okay.
All right.
Please.
The city council has set a goal-setting session for December 6th at 5:30 PM. So you may want to mark your calendars for that. And Dune City offices will be closed starting at noon on November 22nd and continuing until regular office hours on Monday, November 27th. And that are all, those are all the announcements.
Okay. Thank you. Item seven, citizen input on items not discussed in public hearing.
And there are no public hearings tonight.
Okay.
They're pretty much open to speaking about whatever they want.
Okay.
And you have a time upgrade.
Gotcha. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council?
Do they sign anything? They have time.
Okay.
Here's what most mayors do. Let me show you. These are the people that sent us something today.
Chris and Amber Clemmons.
I can't get it to work, I use my phone.
Oh, no. Okay, thank you. Jeannie Jackson.
Yes, I would like to speak of issues that have concerned me for some time. And that is, as you're well aware, I am very concerned with the format of the meetings where we're not allowed to talk about anything pertinent. Time and again, we're told we may not talk about anything on the agenda or other things. And I don't see where telling us what we may or may not talk about is freedom of speech in any way. And it's certainly not what your attorney was talking about. We have a right to say or feel any way we wish to. And I feel like I'm being censored by not being allowed to speak at meetings where pertinent things are happening and I have no say-so in them. And none of us, since the 21st of June, where I'm sure Ms. Mills was quite upset because the people in Westlake actually came and really said what they wanted to say. It was the best meeting I've ever been to in years. And like, how dare the mayor actually let the people speak and talk about their concerns? I thought it was a wonderful meeting and ever since then, we're being punished. Our letters are not being read, we're not being listened to, and when we do ask a good question, we're told no comment. Nobody even wants to answer our questions. And so then I've been told that, well, that is not very nice of you to put things up on the bulletin board or in the paper. You have left me no resort because I deserve to be heard too. And the last time I checked, and Mayor, you just swore to uphold the laws of the nation and the State of Oregon. I don't know what's going on in Dune City, but the last time I checked, we had a right to free speech and to disagree where we choose. And I just feel that it's so dismissive not to even read our letters. We never got to say one thing before you were selected. Now, I have nothing personally against you. You seem to be a lovely man. Maybe you're going to be the best mayor we ever had, but I am very concerned with how you went about choosing the mayor. We don't get any voice in the people who represent us at all. And to say we do because we get to vote in a year and a half, no, that doesn't work. And I'm, you know, I'm very concerned that councillors are coming back and being brought back just because he said, "I'll do it, I'll do it," who really do not represent our concerns. And there's a good reason why some of these people were voted out of office. So I certainly hope you take that into consideration. And I would love it if you chose someone who reflected more the views of Robert Orr or Rory Hammond, who we've lost. And I felt like they were really voices for the people and they really said important things. And I'm so concerned what will happen without them. And you know, I had thought that way very much about the women on the council too, but I'm just very concerned that we're given no voice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Geneva Jackson.
I think I noted earlier that because there is no, there is no special meaning that we may read our letters. So I'm going to read my letter because I think it's important that it gets out into the community. Dear Dune City Council, I'm writing regarding Dune City's proposed plan to apply for city zip code. I have reservations regarding the city doing so. While obtaining a city zip code might simplify the city's fee collection process, moving forward without significant research seems premature and drastic. I'm requesting that this letter be included in the record of the 11/15/2023 Dune City Council meeting. The Budget Committee has yet to complete its formal review of the 22, 2022 city budget or decide whether the city's current financial status requires the adoption of a supplemental budget. As retired councillor Manhattan noted in the September Budget Committee meeting, how does the city, how much does the city have in restricted funds? How much do we have in restricted funds? How much and how do you spend them? He also noticed, observed that no one could answer him. Citizens should have a clear understanding of the city's financial status and procedures prior to the city moving forward with such a significant application. Adopting a city zip code would have lasting ramifications for businesses and citizenry alike. It's my understanding that tomorrow's Planning Commission meeting also includes a discussion of acquiring a city zip code. While I'm not sure how the item could have been included in Planning's agenda without a formal referral, the Citizen Involvement Committee and Planning is the proper place to review issues regarding the application, as well as its implications and consequences related to obtaining one. Just want to make sure that my letters go out, my letter goes out into the community. I, I think a city zip, the city's talked about a zip code many times before. It has its pluses and minuses, but I think it should go to Planning first.
Thank you. Balla Linda Roberts.
Yes, we're here.
If you want to speak.
Yay! I'm not sure what the agenda is. I'd like to hear what's going on in this particular meeting before I move. It's all passed for now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. This takes us to item eight, old business. An eight-day discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of individuals to the, I think it's a county position.
The, you want me to report or do you want to do it? I can go ahead.
Do the chairman. We have six applicants. We are doing interviews next week on Monday and Tuesday, and we'll report back next council meeting.
Very good. Anybody have questions? Item B, collections update.
I talked to the city attorney, asked him to, if there was a collection agency that cities use regularly in the area. And yes, there is. He made a referral. And I have spoken with the person in charge over there. And we have made, we have scheduled a time to meet and discuss what our meets would be. Because they also do code enforcement.
Okay.
What is that, what is that time set for?
I don't remember off the top of my head. It's a phone call. And I asked him to send me something in writing ahead of time so that we know what we're looking at for costs and how that works.
Item nine. Item A is Planning Commission Annual Report on Citizen Input with our Planning Commission Chair Rapunzel.
You all have a copy of written report in your meeting packets. I don't really have anything to add to it except to note that this report is not so much a citizen involvement program report as it is a listing of planning commission activities over the past year. The reason that it's not a CIP report is because Dune City does not have a formal CIP program. It's something that the Planning Commission has been talking about for a long time and will continue talking about and trying to develop in the future.
Any questions? No, I would like to thank Rapunzel. I've been on Planning Commission most of this year and she is a dedicated professional and spends a lot of time on this and has gotten a house on her job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item B is the appointment of Rapunzel to another term on the Planning Commission. Any questions or comments? Her up-to-date application is included in the packet.
This would be her second term. How long is the term? Two years? Four years?
Four.
Three. Three? Two. So nobody knows. Nobody really knows.
I can go bullet look.
Three? Three. Three.
Can we get confirmation of first or any? I just announced any dog, but I want to just confirm the logistics of it all, please.
Yes, I agree. I move that we appoint Rapunzel for the, another term on the Planning Commission. And we think it's three years, but we'll have it confirmed.
And this is year two or your second term, correct?
Second.
Yeah.
All seconded out.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. Item C, proposed franchise agreement between Sayuslove Bank and LLC, doing businesses head in Dune City.
I spoke with our attorney and he is willing to negotiate this for us, but he needs guidance from you do, from, from you as to the items that he asked questions about. So it is in your packet again with his comments in the side. And I don't know how you want to deal with this. If you want to go through it tonight, if you want to table it and go through it at the next meeting, I don't know just how much of a rush there is on this. Or maybe you would like to set up a time after reviewing it carefully to have an executive session with our attorney to discuss the negotiations.
It's the pleasure of the council.
I think it's something that needs to go quickly as you can all see that we're having issues even connecting for citizens that are unable to attend this person. I do not feel that this is something that should be pushed off because I would like to see as many people involved in the meetings as possible.
And I read it and I agreed with some of the things that were said in here and changes that were made. And so I think we, I would have clear guidance to give on what was needed.
Tom, how do you feel?
I've dealt with this company personally, good and bad. I think it's important that we have the opinion involved in this. And let's just get this thing down the road.
I would trust the attorney, that even the questions or the concerns or comments, which you would like to call them, on the side are pretty straightforward.
So based on the comments?
Based on the comments that are listed there, I think that there are things that do need to, and I think it would be up to, I think, I would back the attorney to ask those questions and get those definitions that they're requesting. So I think it should go to the attorney to go ahead and get this taken care of.
So you're comfortable with those comments?
Yes.
We don't need an executive session to direct him to pursue those? And if there's any of their deal breakers? I guess we'll let them work together.
Yeah.
Okay.
So does that require a motion and a vote?
Not really. I can just go ahead and pursue it with him. And if he needs, if he feels he needs to talk to you, he will want to, he'll probably send a memo. And then from there, we would have an executive session for you to, if anybody has any questions after you get the memo or read it.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to item D, new zip code for Dune City. This is a discussion and/or authorization if the city is interested in pursuing. It's just a petition to the post office. The post office does the research on boundaries and who's affected. If they decide it's warranted, they do the public outreach, they notify. I don't know who gets notified, that's a postal regulation. I brought a copy of their primer on new zip codes, but it's basically a post office business decision. We simply petition them that we think we need one for specific reasons or, or we don't. If they turn it down, you can go to your congressperson and act of Congress can enforce the issue, but it's free to apply. So it's on the agenda for discussion and if you so approve, I will pursue it.
I, I valid Ms. Jackson's concern. Pros and cons of it is what we really need to dive into, the ramifications, if there's any penalties to Dune City. Because of course it would go out to everybody that resides here if there's some type of a penalty. So we need to do our research on that.
There's not.
There's no penalties.
Okay. So the pros would be then what, just a further separation of our citizens that may not be warranted?
No, one of the big pros would be, it would be separate from the city of Florence, which has caused issues with some deliveries and tax, tax revenues. We had the League of Cities meeting today and Department of Taxation made a presentation and they said, it's not unique to Dune City. Same problem happens in Newport. A lot of unincorporated county properties will be inside your zip code. And so sometimes it affects the county, sometimes the county gets money and the city doesn't get the money. So that's one item that would simplify the city's life from a, from a permitting and taxation and that sort of thing. But other than that, I don't think there's a downside and they may not approve it. I mean, it's simply we are asking them because it's a business decision for the post office. It's not really a city decision, other than do we want to pursue it or not?
Got a quick question. So Dune City having a zip code that would be different than Westlake? And isn't Westlake already part of Dune City? So this, this is very confusing how there's a difference between the two cities anyway.
Dune City has a Florence zip code. Westlake has their own zip code.
Right, but why would, I, I heard that Dune, that Westlake is actually part of Dune City?
Yes.
Not necessarily part of Westlake.
Part of Westlake, yes. The east side of the, of the lake is not part of Dune City. There may or may not be any confusion. It's a post office decision. They could use the Westlake zip code or they could eliminate and have one new zip code for the whole area. That's the business decision that the post office makes. Cities don't own zip codes, the post office arranges those, so.
Since they've already got one, why not incorporate that into one?
Potentially an easy solution. That's the post office decision though.
Yeah.
So this is really advisory, do we want to even ask the post office or not ask the post office?
Well, might citizens be able to voice their concerns too? I mean, because those of us who have lived in Westlake for decades, you know, we have strong feelings about our post office.
I understand that. It is a postal decision.
Yeah.
It's not a city decision at all. Other than requesting.
All the residents will be affected by it. All residents in Dune City will be affected by this.
Attention.
Attention.
Geneva, did you have?
Yeah, my concern is that while this is the postal, the postal decision, the city would be presenting it to the post. They wouldn't even be making this decision if the city wasn't sending that to, to them. I think it's important that the people here have an opportunity to discuss and probably in the Planning Commission, whether or not we're interested in, in getting one general zip, zip code and how that, and how that might work. And you know, and then, you know, and then you go to the post office. It's not like the post office is out there saying, you know, you should be doing this.
To clarify.
We're asking them.
We're, we don't know if we would get a single zip code. That's a postal decision.
But why are we asking them that? That's the question.
To be differentiated from.
Florence.
Florence. That's the only reason.
And different from Westlake?
That's up to the post office. I don't know.
We're different from Westlake now.
So if that would happen, we would change our address to Dune City, Oregon?
I, do you live in Florence, Dune City, or Westlake?
We, our mail comes to Florence, Oregon, 97439.
You live in the Dune City city line?
Yes.
So your address is already in Dune City. But either works right now. That's part of the confusion.
I think that's what the citizens are probably looking at is there a boundary map that can be drawn? And we also need to hear the concerns that some people have is why are they not wanting more people to be put into a Westlake or a Dune City separation?
So it should be Dune City.
I think the citizens do need to be, they need to be bold as to what the possibilities would be, even if we chose two or we chose not to.
That would be the post office though. They do do that.
Can the post office do something like that before?
They would.
Maybe they'd be more, more up to.
If they believe it is appropriate, yeah, they do the outreach. That's their step.
Perhaps that's something we should do before we.
We can't satisfy the post office requirement though. So that's, the item is to request or not request. That's our only choice here as a, as an entity.
And if we, if we suggest it's not a done deal, correct?
Correct. Now, they can change it if they want. It's a business decision. At some point, there's going to be enough addresses that they're going to have a zip code around here. And it may split the city and we don't know. I mean, we don't have any sway in where the next zip code is.
So at some point, it could be handed down to us without even our permission?
Yeah. Depending on how many addresses and the volume of mail and that sort of thing. So, so it may happen someday anyway. I mean, I came from a community that had 30 zip codes. So it was just a, do we, do we even request it or we just leave it alone and the post office will decide when it's appropriate for the post office?
Well, I, the only, the reason that I had brought it up and begin with was because during, in the Budget Committee, we were not getting the taxes due us. And having a zip code that was for Dune City, it would give us our taxes and Florence will not be getting our taxes. Right now Florence gets our taxes because you guys, right now Florence, they have a Florence zip code. So that's very difficult for us to get the taxes that are due our city. And since that's our, the only thing we live on are those taxes, it'd be nice to have a little bit more.
That's a good point. An important point.
Yeah.
So it's a question about mine.
Well, again, it's pros and cons. I think, you know, the community needs to be involved in trying to help decide whether or not we want to ask for that. But we really want to, before we, we got to do it intelligently and really know what the pros and cons is, are so that we could be, you know, make an intelligent decision on it. So can somebody put together what they know of, of the pros and cons? Especially having to do with the financial because that's an important consideration. We need more money, of course.
I think something that I would, I would ask for, but yeah, can we be apprised of the reach?
Jamie? I'll give you this. I've given you this in the past. We'll put this in the meeting minutes, so it will be, become part of the meeting minutes, the postal primer on zip code. Because it basically goes through that, that there are reasons that make more sense to them and there are reasons that communities have asked that may or may not make business sense for them. So from our end, it's a request, the public outreach formally, because it doesn't matter what we think. If it doesn't make sense to them, they're not going to do it. And at some point, if there's enough volume of mail, they're going to do it. It's no longer a question. So, but we can share that because I don't want to put words in the post office mouth either. It's no guarantee that it fixes all the concerns and it may raise a couple of new ones, but we can add that and then anybody that wants to can read that. It's a fragile publication, but we'll put that in the meeting minutes and have that available.
But Westlake would be even a smaller community than, than Dune City, wouldn't it? And surprising that that got.
When I talked to the post office, Westlake, they were concerned about adding Dune City into the Westlake zip code because it would be the largest area that they have a zip code, not the largest number of people. It was an area. So he said that might be a concern that they have, but people-wise, Westlake's zip codes are very small.
And it's basically a historical holdover. It's been around since the postal 1800.
Yeah, it's not our first post office.
Yeah.
I remember the old one.
But Westlake's been here for years.
It's been there for decades. 1914 is when we first saw a post office. Yeah. But we existed before that. That's just when we got post office. So you know, we, it is a matter of history and caring for all of us who are Dune Westlakers. And maybe we don't want to be a huge post office. Why much rather go to the Westlake post office than the Florence?
It doesn't change the size of the post office.
It will change the size of the post office. I guarantee that.
It's just a number at this point. I, so item E, you could deny or just pay it? If you don't want to pursue right now? If you don't want to pursue right now, then we'll put this, we'll put the federal publication in the meeting minutes.
I move that to table, zip code.
Fair enough. You want to second that? You got a second from Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And, item F, court ruling on recreational, sorry. E, sorry, sorry, E, discussion regarding provisions of the city charter that could put to state law.
As you will recall, when we were talking about the budget and the things that the auditor pointed out, one of them was that we weren't following state law with regard to the bidding procedure. And I reported that we were following state law, and we were. What we aren't following is our own city charter. Our charter restricts any expenditure over $2,000 and says it has to go to bid. The bidding process is quite expensive. And so actually, if it's over $2,000, that's still less than I am authorized to sign and spend on my own, so.
Is that a 1964 figure that should be changed?
Yes, it's a 1964 figure.
Bring that current, like ten grand, is that what you're saying?
Well, state law says 25, though. Yeah. And so that's what I was thinking, but a provision in order to change the charter, we have to go to a vote. It goes to a vote of the people, so.
Citizen vote?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So it might be wiser, but if you're seeking a change to the charter, that at that point, you change the verbiage so that it complies with state law. So that it can, whatever state law does. But anyway, that's up for you guys to decide. I just thought I would bring it to your attention that that is why he says that we don't need that. Is because state law says until I have to spend $25,000, I can just, you know, ask, I can call, and I usually do. I call around, get three bids, you know, this kind of thing, if there's three to choose from. But if I've got somebody under contract already, then I usually just go to them. It would change the way we do things in the office, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. And if you want to discuss that in the future on, with regard to the charter and the issues, then that's up to you guys, someone can direct me to put it on the agenda in the future.
I think the, our cross references reference a statute that has been deleted as well. Because it was the same vintage.
Could be.
I looked it up.
Yeah.
35.05 is called.
Doesn't even exist anymore.
Right, a correction to 279C now. So I think, maybe that's come out of our goal setting. Because I think, we shouldn't change one number, we should look at the entire charter because I think we have a lot of references to state administrative code and ORS that no longer exist. The numbers have all moved. So that doesn't require a vote, that's just a discussion item?
No, that was just a discussion.
All right, any other questions? All right, item F, court ruling on recreational immunity and recommended actions to be taken by the city?
If any.
If any?
There's a packet, there's information in your packet. You had previously directed me to contact the city attorney and get his opinion. His opinion is in there. He wrote it. He is not as concerned about this issue as the insurance, our insurance company is. Our insurance company has, as you'll see in the thing that was sent out from them, says to close all parks to anybody's use. So, yeah, that's where we are. Now, the last time this happened, on the same court case, the court ruled in favor of the state and the city and municipalities. And so while it was on appeal, all we did as a city is put up signs in every one of our park facilities that say, park facilities, use of park facilities is at your own risk. And so those signs are now in every single one of the parks in the city limits. But they're there anyway. Shouldn't have to do anything else. I do bring it to your attention because it's a big issue.
Thank you, any comments from council?
No, I kind of agree with the attorney when I read it. I don't think we should close parks.
That's ridiculous.
The League of Cities today, this will be a topic of much decision or discussion at the next legislative session because I think it went too far, I think every city.
Everybody's impacted.
Yeah.
They would have to close all their parks and not allow anybody to use them for fear of being sued.
Right. All right, so that's not, no action required for that item?
No, 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 I just want to bring it to you. I'm trying to keep you guys in the loop.
Thank you very much. All right, we don't have any public hearings tonight, nothing for executive session, correct?
Correct.
All right, reports. I have a, as I mentioned, I went to the League of Cities today. Newport hosted, the Department of Taxation made a presentation. Talked a lot about transient room tax and I want to thank Melissa and Tom and Rich on the selection committee and the residents. I appreciate your vote of confidence. One of the things I would like to do, we've got a lot of old outdated content on our webpage and I know we have very limited professional staff, so I'm going to look for volunteers to help with articles and updating photographs and things like that, that we can bring hopefully ready to upload to the webpage. So it won't create a bunch of new work for the staff, but we can freshen up some of that and share some more information. And one of my goals would be to have a couple of community activities for, you know, less formal opportunities for the residents to get together than city council meetings and planning commission meetings. I want to thank council president Susan Snow for being the acting mayor and leaving me in good shape here, I appreciate that. And I want to thank the Rapunzel again, the planning commission was a great, great opportunity and we have vacancy on the planning commission, so hope to be able to fill that soon. And for all the residents, remember it takes a village, right? It takes a village to raise a child, it takes a village to run a city as well, so. We need more than comments, we need help sometimes, so. We'll be reaching out. And with that, that's all I have, we go to item B.
Community senate report. Yeah, yeah, we have hot water in the ladies room now. I have been reaching out to try and find somebody who would clean the office, because we lost our office cleaner. And they all want between 35 and $50 an hour and I just can't bring myself to do that, so. We're still, I'm still coming in once in a while.
If you have vacation or anything, you know, it's kind of going rate.
Yes, I know.
You're competing for that or not?
I know it is, yeah. And that's part of the problem, I just can't bring myself to pay it.
All right, thank you. Item C, water quality report.
Well, right now, everything's flowing, all the gunk has flown out, it's over the dam, so things are good. The dam's open. The dam, the rumor is that the dam will remain open until January 1st. But we'll see if that happens. They closed it already?
They closed it yesterday.
Well, they sent the data out and said they were going to keep it open and they've already backed off on it. That's why I said it was a rumor.
Mike Johnson is meeting with the owner next week from the dam here and telling him to leave it open until January. Because if they don't go below the five feet.
So, it was good while it lasted. We've got a lot of water in our lakes and more rain coming, so we'll see how they do. They really let it get down pretty low, I think, this last time before. But that was partly due to drought, so. Other than that?
You have a comment?
I do. Most of you have probably noticed a very big island looking thing floating around Silkhurst Lake that is duckweed. And it seems now to have settled in the Keachley arm. I don't know if it's elsewhere, but. And I'm thinking, we have a real problem with underwater weeds and the duckweed blocks all the light out. So this might be a good thing, it might kill the underwater weeds, which would be great. But right now, it's very hard to drive with your boat, so. And I don't know why they call it duckweed, because the ducks don't want anything to do with it.
Okay, I haven't seen it, but I have to move that way.
All right, is that everything? All right, item D, road reports.
I don't really have anything to report. I have reports from a couple of the councillors, but not all of them. These two councillors have been wonderful in providing me reports for their roads, their assigned roads. Tom, all you have to do is your own road.
I can't get in there with my truck and turn around, you know, I can't back out of that. Is it called Village Terrace?
View Terrace?
View Terrace. I almost heard banjos playing around.
View Terrace is fine. All right, I will ask a woman that I know that lives there.
Oh, I'll take the walk.
But, yeah. Thank you.
All right, item E, permit report.
That's this one. That's a handout that you had on your desk. Just a second, I have it here somewhere.
There we go.
I know I can read it into the record?
Okay.
There were, between October 15th and November 14th, there were four structural permits issued, four mechanical, three plumbing, three electrical and four public works permit. And one of, there was one new build that includes a structural, mechanical and plumbing on it, so. And we issued 14 business, new business licenses. New or? No. Huh? They were either new or renewed. New or renewals.
And what were those business licenses?
And the new build, for your information, is on Hellcat Trail.
The business licenses, what were they for in general?
Well, the only thing we require business licenses for is for contract.
Contracting, just want to make sure.
All right. That takes us to item 14 for the good of the order.
I have a question in regards to a concerned citizen. Knowing that we have consulted out or have what, maybe an ineffective code enforcement program, what does a concerned citizen do when we've had the sheriff here and they said, "Call us"? And now those concerned citizens, when they're calling the sheriff over in noise, are getting threatened by the dispatch, saying if you call again, we're going to seek, you know, problems with you because you're tying up the lines. So we have, you know, my concerned citizen is consulting out to attorneys because they feel like it's not being addressed. In fact, they've consulted an elder abuse attorney.
Could I just say, I totally agree with you and they've been rude to me as well and other people I know who have called with legitimate concerns. Thank you for expressing that.
And they gave us disinformation too.
Yeah, no, it's just outrageous how they treat people like this.
The dispatch has clearly said, well, we're not even going to dispatch this out. It's dead in the water at that point. It's going to cause two citizens to react negatively toward each other, which is not what we need. And the city does not need to be put into a possible litigation, you know, over something that is probably a civil matter, but we're going to be dragged into, drug into, excuse me, because of the lack of attention to the matter.
It's the same thing that we've been talking about for a long time, this community needs law enforcement. And I don't know if you recall when Ryan Senega was here with the sergeant of Lane County Sheriff's Department that's in charge of this area and I said, you know, we are being tired of this type of thing. We're not getting any response from anybody. There is now two deputies covering this area, but they commute from Springfield.
Which would make it an emergency, would it?
Well, I mean, look.
I had two different experiences. When I called the dispatcher lying to me and so they won't do it in less than 24 hours. And Jamie called and the sheriff says, "That is not correct." Dispatcher had bad information. Another citizen called and they came right out, so I can't.
It's a hit or miss deal, it's a matter of manpower, all we need is some money now.
Well, you need to train your dispatchers.
My position is that we don't need to raise taxes anymore. Boy, I just paid my taxes, we only want to die. And, like I told Senega, standing right here, give us the money that we pay to this school district or for law enforcement, to Lane County, whatever. Give us that money. Because you're not covering our area now, let us do it. But we need the funding to do it. We already got the funding, but you're not using it. You, meaning Lane County, is not using it to cover our area. The late Tom Turner, chief police of Florence, once told me that, he says, you know, you look at your tax bill, the millage rate is the same in Veneta as it is in Florence, yet there's no coverage from Lane County Sheriff, but they're paying the same amount of tax as Veneta is. Veneta has seven resident deputies. It just, it makes no sense and.
We need to go stand on Lane County's door.
Well, I did my, what I could as far as bitching to the politician and to the sheriff's department, but that's what we need, is we need our own department.
That's why I'm asking you mayor to follow up with Senega, follow up with the sheriff's department because this is going to become quickly escalating to a situation where we're going to have a real civil altercation between two citizens or one citizen's going to end up suing and Dune City's going to be tagged in on that lawsuit. So, you know, for the sheriff to come here and say, "Hey, give us a call", and this dispatcher that they told me they have their name and they are going to report it, but they're discouraged from calling now because they've been told that they're going to be brought up on charges.
You know, if I might, I have a very pertinent story to raise, saying, I know somebody who, this person is a dear friend of the family's, he teaches karate. And he had three times had his garage broken into, had reported it to the police. Of course, they come and they steal all your medals and your tools and they would not do anything about it. And he even said, "I know who's doing it." He even gave a name, they said, "No, sorry, we can't help you unless he's caught red handed." So what he did the next time is, because he has a black belt in karate, he caught the guy. He came early, cut the guy in his garage. He got him into, you know, like a hold or whatever one does if you're a black belt, tied him to a chair, called the police. And they told him, "If you don't let that guy go immediately, you're going to be charged with kidnapping. We can't get there, you have no right to hold him." He was threatened by the police, "If you don't let him go, we're going to charge you with kidnapping, sir. You have no right to hold him against us." So that is crazy. And that's what we're dealing with when they do say. That is crazy. And this man tried to do a citizen's arrest. He did the right thing, but they told him, basically, we can't help and we don't care and you're going to be charged if you don't help.
And Lane County will not prosecute you with that information?
Pardon?
Lane County will not prosecute?
No, it's outrageous. I shared that with Mr. Senega, we were talking about Senega who came here to talk to us all. I had two lengthy conversations with him on the phone, he said, "I'm so sorry to hear that, it breaks my heart." And it's not that we don't care, we care a lot, there's two of us and we're supposed to do this entire area. And, like you say, they're doing Veneta, they're doing other places and they're a lot closer to them. It has to be really important to get somebody here. So, you know, if you're being held at ninth point, I'm not sure they could come. They could say, "Well, is he actually sticking it in you?" They could say, "Well, is he actually sticking it in you, or is it just a threat?" No, I mean, it's bad. I agree with you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I think you've had time.
I just want to thank Janie for putting up with me for the last four months and helping me through all the different things that we had to do. And welcome. Ed, we are glad you're here.
Thank you. Tom? No? All right. Saying nothing else, this meeting's adjourned. Oh, do we need...
We need a motion.
All right. All fair?
Yep, time to time.
It is 6:50.